Everybody ready? We'll call the September meeting. The town of Black Mountain Board of Order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please keep in mind the poor souls over in Ukraine and in Gaza. Hopefully, the numbness that is being expressed across our country can go ahead and influence our leaders to say, we need to put a stop to this killing in Gaza. Maybe secret. Couple of announcements. Number one, Don Collins asked me if I could repeat this. Allegations have been made in Superior Court, file 22C4SO4516, that the undersigned made untrue statements about Don Collins, which are disputed. The parties, that if the allegations were made by anyone, the statements are untrue, signed by Don Collins, Mike Sobel, and Rick Harwood. Secondly, the mayor's been working to get bids for the renovation of the clubhouse, both upstairs and down. The upstairs has floor joists that need to be reinforced. There was a fire that was there back in 1976, but Gary Bartlett was so kind to inform me and tell me about exactly what had happened on it. And they were scorched, but our town inspector has deemed that therefore they need to be reinforced. So I got an extra. There's been two structural engineer firms look at it, one back in November and one this spring. They both agreed that what needs to be done is to put in approximately 24, one by 12, about 18s and then by 10s. And that would secure that floor. And if that is done, then that means that the senior citizens could be reusing the upstairs. So, and I remind the board that, keep in mind that an agenda can be adjusted and things can be added to the agenda by a simple motion by one of the board members and a unanimous approval. So I hope that the board will keep that in mind as we proceed tonight and think about renovating that senior citizen. The ethics statement. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the council, all council members have a duty to conduct the affairs of the governing board in open and public manner, free of conflicts of interest. Is there any item on the agenda that the outcome of which will have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact for any council member? Here's her family or close business associates?
No.
Does any council member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before this council today?
None.
There being none, all council members have a duty and obligation to vote. I wish now to read a proclamation. Whereas in the year 1950, 27 faithful followers in Jesus Christ came together to establish a place of worship, fellowship, and service, planting the spiritual roots of what would become the First Christian Church Disciples of Christ in Black Mountain. And where for 75 years, this church has stood as a beacon of hope, compassion, and Christian witness in the community, nurturing generations through worship, biblical teachings, music, mission, and ministry. Whereas the members and leaders of the First Christian Church have dedicated themselves to embodying Christ's love through acts of service, justice, healing, and hospitality, both within the walls of the church and throughout the Black Mountain community and beyond. Whereas this congregation has faithfully answered God's call through times of challenge and celebration, growing in grace, embracing diversity, and remaining steadfast in its mission to proclaim the gospel. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that on this special occasion, the 75th anniversary of the First Christian Church Disciples of Christ, we honor and give thanks for the visionaries who founded it, the leaders who shepherded, and the members who continue to faithfully serve. Be it further proclaimed that this 75th year be a time with joyful remembrance, renewed commitment, and bold vision for the future, as the church continues its journey under God's guidance for years to come. Proclaim this fifth day of October, excuse me, proclaim that this, that should be September, in the town of Black Mountain with gratitude and celebration for 75 years of faith and service, by C. Michael Sobel, the mayor. Very good. Glad that we could do that. That's very good. That was also the year I was born. How about that?
Good year.
But anyway, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Now for citizens' comments.
We have another question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Next, we have a resolution commemorating the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Helene. And the mayor has asked me to go ahead and read it tonight. This is a resolution of the town council, the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina, recognizing the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Helene, resolution number R-25-50. Whereas on September 27, 2024, Hurricane Helene struck western North Carolina, including the town of Black Mountain, bringing historic rainfall, flooding, and destruction across the region. And whereas the storm caused the tragic loss of lives, displaced families, damaged homes and businesses, and significantly impacted the natural environment, including the loss of much of the community's tree canopy. And whereas the town of Black Mountain stands in solemn remembrance of those whose lives were lost and whose families and loved ones continue to grieve. And whereas, in the year since the storm, the residents of Black Mountain in western North Carolina have demonstrated remarkable resilience, unity, and strength, supporting one another in recovery and rebuilding efforts. And whereas federal, state, and local agencies, along with nonprofit organizations, faith communities, and countless volunteers, have partnered with the town in response and recovery, helping to restore essential services, repair public facilities, and aiding those in need. And whereas, the town of Black Mountain recognizes that recovery is ongoing, and that with each step forward comes an opportunity to build a stronger, more prepared, and more resilient community. And whereas, the town remains committed to investing in flood mitigation, stormwater management, resilient infrastructure, and environmental restoration, ensuring that Black Mountain is better positioned to withstand future storms. And whereas, the anniversary of Hurricane Helene serves as both a solemn reminder of our losses, and a hopeful marker of the community's enduring spirit and capacity for renewal.
All right. Next we've got.
Sorry. And do I read the rest of the be it resolved?
Did you get it? Yeah.
Now therefore be it resolved. We'll leave this part out. By the town council of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina. One, that the town council honors and remembers all lives lost during Hurricane Helene, and extends its deepest sympathies to their families and loved ones. Two, that the town council recognizes and expresses gratitude to the residents, first responders, all town employees, partner organizations, and volunteers who have contributed to recovery and rebuilding over the past year. Three, that the town council reaffirms its commitment to building a safer, stronger, and more resilient Black Mountain for generations to come. And four, this resolution shall be entered into the official records of the town of Black Mountain as a testament to the community's perseverance and dedication to the future.
Do I hear a motion to accept that resolution? So. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Alice.
If I could, before we get into the comments, can we go ahead and remove an item from the agenda? Item 9D, which is a resolution to authorize Helene abatement, violation at 141 South Richardson Boulevard. I'd like to pull that item from the agenda. The council's okay with that.
And the reasoning, we'll pull it in?
Reasoning, pulling it in is, more opportunity to speak with council, legal council.
So say the board?
I'm fine with your lead.
Yes. Okay. Now, Alice? Okay. So it looks like all five members agree. Now it's time for a citizen comment. We've got quite a few here. So keep in mind that the citizen comment is three minutes. When you come up, you give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. And so if I stop you at the end, I'm not trying to be rude, but we've got right at 25 people speaking tonight, so we move through. So first up, John Collins.
John Collins, 26, Shady Walk Trail, Black Mountain, North Carolina. Within the Black Mountain city limits, on a residential home located at 82 Camp Ranch Road. This property is 25, 60 feet above sea level, and two lots above 94 Camp Ranch Road at approximately 25, 75 feet above sea level. All of these properties are across from Mr. Gary Bartlett at 95 Camp Ranch Road. We've been working with the town since mid-July, providing possible causes and solutions to our water issues. Gary has been working much longer. The town has offered to supply us with a dab water pump to help us with some issues. I'm currently investigating with the manufacturer for more details concerning some questions I had based upon no water available and damage it could cause to the water pump and the impacts. My property is 82 Camp Ranch Road, has been without adequate water pressure since Hurricane Helene. I was fortunate enough to be able to take this home off the Black Mountain water system at that time when the hurricane occurred, but I've been unable to bring it back online and use the town's water. Currently, the static water pressure is four to seven PSI, measured. When under load, and this is a triple load, it's between three and zero PSI. Prior to Helene, the water was 20 PSI or above. That's a huge difference. 94 Camp Ranch Road is on the market. It's currently not being, does not have water, but it will be once it's sold. It's at 25, 60 elevation as well. Low water pressure causes damage to water lines, pumps, holding tanks, appliances, dishwashers, washing machines, water heaters, et cetera. I've been told verbally by the town water department, I cannot get water for my two lots to build on those two. I've paid taxes on these for 15 years in the previous owner since they were taken into the town limits. I understand that there's a new development going in close to Richcrest, and the elevation of those lots are higher than mine, and the town's going to provide them water. How can the town of Black Mountain provide water to a development outside the town limits and not provide my lots water? And I've been paying taxes. How can the town not provide water at 82 Camp Ranch Road when the state mandates levels that are required by DEQ?
John?
Thank you very much. Thank you. I appreciate it for you looking into this issue. Gary Bartlett. Those of you that may not have been new here, Gary Bartlett was the youngest fire chief ever registered in North Carolina, and our fire chief for many, many years. The finest firefighter that we've ever, ever had. Gary.
Thank you, Bruce Collins. Gary Bartlett resides at 95 Camp Ranch Road, and also has water service at 89 Camp Ranch Road. I provided each and every one of you with a copy of the report that I've taken my time to work on. Like Mr. Collins said, since Helene, we've not had adequate water pressure. It took us 54 days to get water. So since that time, mine's varied anywhere from four to seven, eight, 10 pounds, back and forth. But the main thing is, being at the end of that line, the fact that those folks below us and down further on Lake of Gap, when they have a high demand of water, guess where the water's coming from? It's coming out of the water plants above, coming down. Thus, air enters the line, and air cavitation will do damage to pumps, pipes, and as you see in that report, there's several things in there I've had to replace. All I would like to have is that the proper pressure be reinstated like it was 30 years ago, when I signed that, like Mr. Collins said, the DEQ says it has to be 30 PSI all over the system. But the town has a policy that if you have water above 2,550 feet, they'll provide you 20 PSI, and you set dust to pump. Well, I've been pumping for 30 years at one place and seven or eight years in another place. All I want is that water back, that water pressure back. And I think if you read those questions in there, maybe that you could see some of the possible causes of that. I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure damage. There's something wrong somewhere. A leak in the creek, or the fact that my staff's admission, 60% of the water moor's coming from Asheville, and that alone will take 130 pounds of pressure just to get it to the top of that Pimblet tank, but not even getting it to the south tank.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We will look into this. Feel certain Josh will get on this, and we'll then let the board know something as soon as we have our next meeting.
We've been in conversation with both of these gentlemen. Yes, we'll be happy to.
Sidney Joiner.
My name is Sidney Joiner. I live at 120 South Ridgeway Avenue. So I'm here to speak on what happened with the matter on Ridgeway, South Ridgeway Avenue. I spoke to you all at the last town council meeting in August, I mean, again with my neighbors at the community meeting last week, so. at a community meeting last week, so I will not use my three minutes to repeat myself. I think that we all know that South Ridgeway Avenue is incredibly unsafe for pedestrians, and that the amount of pedestrian traffic on our road is growing every day. Those of us that live there, and the many, many people who want to visit the local businesses there, cannot avoid walking on the street. I'm for anyone, especially town staff and council, to at any time try to walk from Lookout Brewing down to Bush Farmhouse, to see the dangers that I face every day. I support any action that the town will take to make South Ridgeway Avenue a safer, more walkable street, with the key word there being "action" as opposed to "inaction." Over the past week, I've learned that there are many different viewpoints and concerns about making the street one-way, whichever you appear and understand the pros or cons. This is definitely not a perfect proposal. In a perfect world, we would quickly install sidewalks, maybe they drop out of the sky, and keep that road two-way. But the problems with that solution are that it will take a very long time, cost the town a ton of money, cause disruptions to our daily lives with construction, and may not even be possible given the space restrictions. There's fairly enough room for two lanes safely as it is. I've heard mention of a 40-foot right-of-way. I'm not aware of that, but if it exists, I'm pretty sure it would include my driveway from a portion of my house. Though the one-way proposal is not perfect, it is something, and in fact, action is required here to save lives. My concern with tailing the issue is that it will sit on this metaphorical table for another two and a half years, and someone will be killed on our street in the meantime. This would not be because the residents and property owners on South Ridgeway are not eager and willing to engage with town staff and council to come up with solutions. I know that several property and business owners have repeatedly requested to be a part of this process, to collaborate with town staff and council, but to know the battle thus far. My hope is that we can find a quick, effective, and collaborative solution to make South Ridgeway a safer, more walkable street, and to maintain the sense of community and care that my neighbors have created. The proposal before he tonight is just one step of many. I do hope that safety, rather than inconvenience, will be at the forefront of these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sidney. Merrill Smatski.
Marilyn Smatski, 208 Rutherford Avenue. Last month, I spoke to you about my concerns about the reduced park hours. I'm going to give them a whole lot of thought tonight. I actually really just want to share some ideas I have. But I do want to note that ordinance that cited was dated 1980. That was, our population has doubled since then. It was 14 years later that the path around the lake was completed, and almost every park that we think of now didn't even exist back then. Safety is my real concern, above and all, and the current restricted hours, again, it's a smaller amount. It's not like all day, you know, it's a few hours, but those are critical hours, or useful hours for some people to enjoy walking, which we all encourage. And that's directly threatening safe walking in the immediate neighborhood during those eliminated hours, five to six in the morning, and nine maybe at night. It lends the opportunity to safe walking in Lake Tomahawk area for those who reside, who visit, tracting members, fitness enthusiasts, or anyone who accesses or wants to access a safe pathway in those hours. Well, unlike South Ridgeway, we have a facility, safe path at the lake. Because now, it's just not allowed to use it at certain hours, and that's what I struggle with. And it's impossible to take the neighborhood out of the park, take the park out of the neighborhood. But my first idea, it sort of leans in that direction, making a minimal change, and that is to designate the walking path as a separate entity from the rest of the park facilities in regards to hours of use, assigning it 5:00 AM, and what if it's even cut back to 11:00 PM, while keeping the 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM for the other facilities, basically the structures. And my second idea is a little bit more involved, and please fleshing out, but essentially is the idea to create two groups of parks, each with its own set of hours. The central parks, being Town Square and Lake Tomahawk, would have longer hours, and then the peripheral parts, and you might have better words for those, would be like Bedevins Park and River Lawn Park, which can have a 6 to 9 PM hours. They are more isolated. The other parks are right in the midst of things and open on all four sides. And maybe if that can happen, because that would take time to change in ordinance, which that would be needed, maybe there can be an intermediate solution.
Carol Tapper. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Livith Farley.
Hello, I'm Livith Farley, and I think that you can tell by my oh-so-subtle t-shirt that I'm here to talk about Black Mountain pickleball. The Black Mountain pickleball community totally understands why we were unable, why the town was unable to fulfill our dream last year of having six pickleball courts, four tennis courts, or four tennis, two tennis courts, two basketball courts, and public classrooms. Helene took away that dream. I do want to just remind you that the Black Mountain pickleball community had pledged $60,000 to that dream for last year. We are still active, we are still playing pickleball, and I'm urging you to put pickleball back on your priority list. It might not be able to be top of the priority list, but I really don't want it put down at the bottom. We don't want to start where we went, we came from so long ago. Several of you live close to the courts. I wanted to text you on Saturday morning and say, "Come out. Come out and see the 40-plus people who were out there playing. Come out any Tuesday, Thursday, or Saturday morning, and see the people who are buying for courts." Also on Saturday, there were people trying to play basketball. Their balls would go askew because of the cracks were so desperate. What do these courts have in common? They are in terrible condition, and I really don't like saying this. They're an embarrassment to me. They should be an embarrassment to you as representatives of Black Mountain. Each time a visitor comes to play pickleball with us, they will question one of us and say, "Are these really your only public pickleball courts?" Our answer is, we were so close last year to having pickleball and basketball courts. We were so close to having a town recreational park. Would you please, if you give any Helene money, if you give any undesigned money, put them back into the recreational plan? Make a park that all of us will be proud to walk into. Thank you.
Thank you, Livith. Cy Dreagan.
I'd like to speak at the second citizen comments, please.
Second citizen. All right, Catherine Mathews.
Second session, please. Thank you.
Bob Hardy. Soon as the same.
Yeah, I guess so.
All right. Deb Brock.
My name is Deb Brock, and I've lived in town at 296 Old Lake of Gap for 41 years. Several people here may speak to the proposal on South Ridgeway and the one-way street. I've heard talk about the root of the problem. I've spoken openly and critically with town manager since he was the planning director when he pushed through the poorly designed Tudor Croft project, which resulted in flooding and stormwater problems downstream, along with a $70 annual utility fee on all residents. The problems associated with his leadership roles are extensive. From the decision to get into the garbage business, only to lose those trucks in the flood plain where they were left parked during Hurricane Helene, to the neglect of the planning department's unfinished work with the unified development ordinance, which has remained unfinished for three years now. The meeting zoning changes could include an honest evaluation of how to move vehicles and people throughout town. To the planning department failing to their duty to ensure that the public was safe and that inspection fees property owners paid for were valid, I am of course steep referring to open oven and natural losses resulted from improper inspections and of the use of unqualified contractors. Now I hear the town inspector is enclosing down yet another commercial enterprise for the same reason. To the loss of our town water production, which has left us with a ramp from the city of Asheville and $500,000 invoice for water. These problems will not get behind us. We have a new planning director, and I wish you great success in our efforts to resolve these many issues. Urge the town council to initiate a search for a new town manager, and enhance and to enhance the advisory boards such that they can offer valuable guidance to administrators and the town council. You will likely hear some advice today from residents who must use South Ridgeway, and those who are aware of the adverse ripple effects that this one-way street would cause. And lastly, we should start talking about how we are going to put a sidewalk down South Ridgeway, as the town has the 40-foot right-of-way to create a two-way traffic solution with pedestrians kept safe. That is the proposal I would be willing to contribute to. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Mark White.
Mark White, 787 Lake of Gap Road. Just pulled two touch bases a little bit on the water pressure issues that residents on Camp Ranch are having. I brought this to the board several months ago about there was a problem, had to be a problem with the booster pump, head hill tank, or the altitude valve at the south tank. When we designed the south tank back in 2001, me, Bob White, and McGill, the south tank had an elevation to provide proper water to switch from the Gill tank and the south tank without overflowing due to the altitude valve and the booster pump. All that was, we'd done numerous surveys, and before we built the south tank and put it at the correct elevation. And now we've got a 15 or 20 PSI drop across the whole, it's not just Camp Ranch, it's across the whole tank on the water. Next, and I brought this up to y'all and the staff a couple months ago, y'all let the public works director come up here and advise me about being a district room employee, because I brought it out to the public. I'm a district room employee, I was retired eight years ago. I'm a district room taxpayer. When it comes to hydraulics in this water system, it's a finicky, finicky water system, and there is a problem, and it come about since the storm. Also, I was on the DEQ website, town staff still haven't completed the local water supply plan. Over three years now, and it's still not completed. The town also received another violation last year where they didn't do the consumer confidence report. It was due by July, they didn't get it in until last December. So that's what I would like town to do, is assess the water system. And just because I bring it to the attention of the board and the town facility and directing everybody, I'm a district room employee. Like I say, the system and all the town citizens need adequate water pressure.
Thank you. All right, next, Mike Smell.
Small. My name's Michael Small at 112 South Ridgeway Avenue. I've lived there since 1998. Went to the meeting last week, and there was a lot to unpack there as far as the one-way road. And the more I thought about it, like, I've seen an uptick with the cars. I've been complaining to the town for about the speed, and of course, the pedestrians. I was working on my car today, and a young lady, she personally walked through my yard. I told her, "You're fine, you can walk through my yard, it's fair of getting hit by a car." And I see, you know, I see the need, and I see that it's not a safe situation. What I also see is that I want the whole town of Black Mountain to be safe. I'll walk throughout the whole town. It's a great town. We just had an article in Southern Living, and Fred Mylison's Spades, and it talked about the walkability within the radius of the town. And the problem with this one lane is, I'm not willing to just worry about me and just negate the rest of the town. And I feel like that's what we're going to do. We're just pushing it over. But then what happens when you go to the mailbox? It's not a good situation for the whole town. And my fear is, if we push through something quickly like this, just over concerns like this, then we're going to be stuck with that situation, other than making the town what it can be. I love Black Mountain, and I want it to be a great town, and that's all I can say.
Very good. Thank you for your comments, Monica.
Thank you.
Don Collins.
I'm good.
Okay. Elsie Clemmons.
Hi. I am maybe the newest Black Mountain resident in the room, so thank you for having me here. I appreciate being here this evening. I...
Name and address.
Elsie Clemmons, 39, Maine D Lane. I used to teach in Cherokee as my connection in North Carolina. I'm originally from the foothills of Appalachian Mountains in Alabama. And I came here from Texas, where I've been doing RV recovery work to donate my time as a federal policy expert. I have the unfortunate ability to navigate the federal government, see my compliance really well, and I donate my time helping nonprofits and municipal governments do that. I also, I came here last October, and so that's why I moved to Black Mountain. I came here to donate my time for three weeks, and I ended up moving here full-time because the need has gone huge. My knowledge is not just about disasters, though, it's for a thing that's called disaster recovery through placemaking. I am connected with national organizations that I speak with frequently, like Congress for New Urbanism, Smart Growth America, Strong Towns, and I'm an especially big fan of a new, it was just coming out in the past year and a half by one of my colleagues, Wes Marshall, called Field by Traffic Engineer. And I am a big fan of your restaurants and your bars, and I'm a big fan of walking. So I have really enjoyed walking, bouncing between all of the delicious craft cocktail places that you have, because that's a favorite of mine. And so one of the things that I encountered, which I learned more about by being at Bush, was walking between bars and restaurants, and then the fencing lit up along the road, et cetera. And so what, I'm already here, I've been donating my time for a year. I am connected with national organizations that specialize in solving these problems. I'm, Congress for New Urbanism is also a big fan of things called tactical urbanism, which is lighter, leaner, quicker, cheaper. So we always are looking for ways to do things with no money. I'm a former art teacher, so look, no money, no resources, and something that you can do with kids on a weekend is like a perfect solution. And I've heard a lot of concerns that people have about, you know, the desire for walkability. There's always constraints of the city budget, and so I just... And so I just wanted to throw out my donation of knowledge, resources, and connections. My friends love me, they love that I do things in disasters, they are very supportive. I've been putting all of my time and energy into Swananoa because I think we can all agree it definitely means it. But I would like to throw my, you know, offer my resources to this group, to anyone in the room that cares about things like this. I deeply care about it and I went to all, between Keller High Water and Bush a couple of weeks ago, I was really startled by the fact that I was terrified for the first time to walk between those two because of the fencing on up. And it really caught me off guard and I was terrified, I mean, it's only a lock and a half, but I was actually really scared because it was at night during the dark and I had to climb over the caution fence to get on one side of that.
I'll have to cut you off there. What is your phone number?
It's 202-880-7799. They know we're-
Thank you.
Stuck with me for better or worse.
Very good. Run for town.
It does, but then it goes back. Very likely back to green.
The microphone is somewhere. My name is Peter Fraser. I live at 304 Genesis Circle Number Four in Black Mountain. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this opportunity to address the council. For what I'm going to get into here, the required number of people from my neighborhood is two, we've got a few more than that. Most of them, only two of us will speak. Okay, so now I'm going to read to you from town ordinance number 0-86-1, section 20-174. This section has two parts, and I'll read the part that is relative to our situation. Quote, "The complaints of two or more persons, at least one of whom resides in a different home from the other complaining person, made to the police department concerning the emission of any sound shall be prima facie evidence that such sound is loud, disturbing, and unnecessarily loud." Now to help qualify the or clarify the language a bit, the dictionary defines the ordinance's descriptive words, "prima facie evidence" as meaning, quote, "accepted as correct until proven otherwise," unquote. Thus, a burden of proof is on whoever or whatever party will dispute the judgment of the two or more people who had lodged a complaint. We represent here that the town has an ordinance on the books that the ordinance specifies a clear standard for evaluating excessive noise. And we being two or more people who have made the complaint to the town police, so the standard specified in the ordinance is given. The next step is enforcement. The police have responded to us that the police cannot cite the owner of the vehicle in question unless a day the police witness the noise infraction themselves erect. The language of the ordinance makes clear that such direct involvement of the police is not required. Please direct the town police to uphold the law and protect our public life. I hope, I gave some materials earlier in the day to the managerial officer. And along with a thing with a note from another neighbor who put a G3 tonight, Robert Clark. And I hope it'll be read aloud sometime this evening.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right.
Bill Wagner, 310 Genesis Circle. I am second party, that rule that he just read to you clocks him out. And there's a gentleman who lives in the apartment, one of the apartments on Genesis Circle who has a very large pickup truck. And when he goes to work in the morning and he turns on the Genesis Circle, he sometimes can be reasonable, but invariably when he gets to North Fork Road, which is the back of my house, he lets loose with all hell. And that's coming and going twice a day is, it's not tenable. It doesn't make things easy. I am hard of hearing and I don't need more things to push the limits of my hearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mark Thompson.
Good Irish name.
Thanks, Rick. Mark Thompson, South Ridgeway, owner of Freshwater Bar Pizza. And 15 years, been crazy. Talking about Ridgeway Avenue, it becomes a wonder. I would appreciate the town to actually table this issue until a comprehensive impact study can be conducted. It has to do with move, how the traffic would move down Richardson Boulevard, Highway Nine, lost service, uses that road council. It would impact, the safety obviously is a big concern of people walking that street. Sidewalk would be the opportune thing when we keep traffic moving. It's a difficult decision. I think speedy humps would be a temporary fix until that would be an impact study. I just would like to find a resolution for the residents, businesses, and the townspeople on that side. If the study was done on a busy day, December 17th, where the traffic is less, I think we'd get a better and clearer understanding of the impact. I appreciate it.
Sure.
And we'll get back to work. Thanks. We've had some great viewing.
To you.
Good evening. My name is Sheila N'Cheli. I own the property at 151 South Ridgeway Avenue. I'd like to talk about the situation on Sutton Avenue. So we've managed to survive five feet of flooding from lurking, we're trying to recover from that traffic naturally. It now feels like a cyclone has gone through that area. We have a situation with a fence being spelled on the railroad property, parking being shut down along the railroad property, a discussion with October Ridgeway to a longer street. I've reached out on many occasions to town employees to discuss both the railroad and the railroad along Sutton and it's all fallen down back there. I'd be happy to provide the specifics on the terms I have to show up. I'm trying to get through this in two minutes. For several years I tried to get information about who was responsible for maintaining that sort of property along the railroad. I never could get that information, so my tenant, the Bush Farmhouse, and I decided we would spend the money, we would clean it up, and we would put a gravel down to fill in the coffees. The town employees showed up while we were installing the gravel and shut the work down. He contacted the railroad and said that a meeting would be held two days later. Four employees of the town managed to show up for this meeting. They were determined to block off that section. They instructed the railroad to set up those brackets. They told us even if we tried to lease directly from the railroad, it would not be possible in park path. At that meeting, I asked if there was anything we could do to put up those brackets. On August 25th, I started another meeting, I'm trying to get a regular meeting. Anyway, my most recent interaction was at a meeting we needed to discuss Ridgeway, one way. I was hoping Michelle that if we wanted to discuss the town leasing of the railroad property for parking purposes, I would have to deal directly with the town council. So that's why I'm here tonight. It would seem logical that the town council could hopefully extend their lease along the railroad property, you know, just so they could provide parking across the premises. So I would respectfully request that you take this into consideration.
Very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Anna Stern, I live at 419 Curly Heights Road. As an initial matter, I just want to encourage you all to adopt this facts proposal to make South Ridgeway Avenue a one-way street with a pedestrian path along the asphalt. This is an appropriate short-term solution for what is obviously a very dangerous third fear. And I hope that additional consideration will be given in the future to adding a proper sidewalk and perhaps returning it to its former two-way path. But we really have to take action now before a dangerous accident occurs. One of that decision though, I am extremely concerned about the construction of the fence at the railroad. There were less intrusive, less expensive, safer options available. There was no notice to the property owner, the defense would be constructed. There was no court order authorizing town staff to contract with or enter onto a property, authorize someone else to enter onto the property to erect that fence. I thank you for tabling that agenda item tonight while to give you additional time to understand all of the facts. I served as minute clerk for this council and as paralegal to the town attorney for more than 15 years. I understand the need for code enforcement. I have a deep respect for town staff, multiple generations of whom I have worked very closely with over the years, and I appreciate the services that they provide to our citizens. But the way that enforcement and code compliance is being handled right now is shameful. It's abusive. It's damaging our small business-
Amen! Yeah, yeah. What I got.
I think every citizen should be concerned about the precedent that has been set by town officials coming onto private property without notice or a court order and putting up a six-foot tall chain link ice door that made the pedestrian path less safe than it already was. But that's just one example. As we've heard tonight, there are also concerns about what happened at Open Oven, about what's happening at Black Mountain Brewing, and all of these are adding to a fear, a climate of fear among small business owners. No one should feel fear or apprehension about engaging in services that our town is legally obligated to provide. If we continue on this path, making it ever more difficult for mom-and-pop businesses to meet our zoning requirements, we will lose the homey, small-town culture that makes our town so special. We will become South Asheville. We will have a corridor of national franchises and box stores that can afford to hire the professionals necessary to meet those rigorous requirements. I hope you'll meet with the property owners, I hope you'll consider what you can do to change that climate.
What is his name? Mike Sides. Yeah, he's the one that has Red Rocker. Mike Sides. He's very sorry.
There's a delay in the video.
Thank you for having me. My name is Mike Sides. My wife Kate and I own the Red Rocker Inn. We have been here for-
Your address?
136 North Doray Street, sorry. We came to this town because we loved the community feeling. And one of the top reasons, final reasons why we chose to invest in this community was we went to the Bush Farmhouse. And we became good friends, even though we're competitors with the owners there. And last year, as we all know, we just had a resolution in this. It was a devastating flood, Red Rocker Inn sustained some damage, but the Bush Farmhouse was almost destroyed. And our friend, the owner, Mark Henner, we told him whatever we can do to help. And any other volunteers that came to town, we told them, we have no power, we have no water, we have no electricity, cell service is spotty, but we have pets. So if you need a place to stay, if you're volunteering, please come here. And he recovered, we all recovered. And, and things are starting to turn around. We're hoping to have a good fall season, all of us in the business community. And one quick story, Mark's not gonna have about this, but that's you who's going through disaster. He had a family that was working for him, they had lost their home. And out of his own pocket, he gave them some money, a loan money. And I was there a couple weeks ago when they came back and returned it. So that's the kind of pillar of this community that the owner of Bush Farmhouse is. And so to have the town, when we're finally recovering from what happened last year, we're finally getting over the hump, we're actually reopening our restaurant, hopefully in the next week or two, after almost a year. To have the town come in and impose on Ridgeway for some capricious reason to put a fence, a wall, on both sides of the street which imperils his business and significantly increases safety risks for no capricious reasons, or for capricious reasons, or it seems like, they just put the fence up for no reason. It was basically sadistic after what we've all been through. For the town to come in with its police powers, putting up a fence, using resources to police officers out there making sure that these fences were up. And it's outrageous and we need to tear down those fences, please. Thank you.
All right, Sykes, Jess, we want to give a second. We'll give Mandy a few minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name's Mandy Carter, I reside at 1018 Longstreet Road in Black Mountain. Hopefully less tears this time, maybe. I'm an external person. It has come to my attention that Black Mountain does have an unofficial policy for tree hand key protection, and we are tonight to ask town council members and other tree advocates to work together to compose a better, more effective policy to protect Black Mountain's beautiful trees. So that, I am gonna cry, so that the awful tragedy that happened on the property of 220 in South High Avenue, where a lovely, beautiful maple tree and dozens of other mature trees were bulldozed in the development of Circle Pay will not happen again. Our trees are not just a beautiful part of our- canopy protection off of just an idea board and more into policy so that these things aren't... So they're not just tree and trees, permanent deserts.
Eric Mallow.
Jennifer Bittcrane. 377 Lake Eden Road, 59 years, and right on the border of Swananoa, Black Mountain. And this is my first time coming back into Black Mountain for a while. I find since the storm, I smell like I'm in Swananoa. And it's a real gift to have a town council and to have leadership at this level. As Elsie and I and a lot of us in Swananoa know, like, how much it takes. So thank you all for doing this. I am here tonight to talk on behalf of the Bush Farmhouse. We go back 25 years. Mark, when he had his restaurant in New York, which was one of the top five restaurants in the world, he brought his family to Leaf Festival and raised his kids there. So him coming into our community at this level is not just a Black Mountain gem, but it's an international gem with a destination history. And when he had to close Mediva and Honorosa Mandela in New York, which was a big beacon of restaurants in the world, all of the town, from Brooklyn to Harlem, really, you know, really took his heart. So we have a gift here. What most of us witnessed, Mark and his family, the loss during COVID, and their survival and their rebuild was unlike anything else I saw, except in Alhambos and a couple other places. But the resiliency has been extraordinary, and his generosity of spirit, not just donating to other people, he's been one of the main people that feeds our leaf artists, takes care of anybody, and watching how the town has been treating both him and the farmhouse and Sheila and the property. Again, this is one of our beacons of our community. And not assisting to advocate for parking and to advocate for us being a kind community and taking good care of Mark and the Hennigans and the Bush community, it would make me really grateful to see us step up and be the kind community that he has given to ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Joe Isen.
Okay. Drew Isen. I've lived in three of our own district for 50 years. I own a business on Broadway in downtown Black Mountain. I am very sympathetic with the residents and businesses on South Ridgeway and Sutton Avenue. I am totally opposed to the proposed resolution to make South Ridgeway and Sutton Avenue a portion of one way. I think it's another example of a knee-jerk, short-term reaction by the town to serious long-term problems. The solution to pedestrian safety is sidewalks and crosswalks. We've asked for a crosswalk on Broadway, and they've ignored for years, but I understand the frustration of people who live on that street. The town needs to put in a sidewalk, and you put crosswalks in the proper places, and maybe even some speed bumps. But what you're doing now is punishing the businesses on that street. You're also creating more congestion on Richardson Boulevard and Broadway, which in the summertime are always packed with people. The big problems in town are lack of adequate sidewalks, particularly near downtown, and lack of parking everywhere in town, particularly in the central business district. It's an issue that's been talked about and talked about and talked about, but nothing is done in town. We don't build sidewalks, we don't find parking, we don't, you know, start on the railway and find out what can be done. The town should be doing that. Now, we're penalizing the business, we're penalizing residents, because the town doesn't do what the town is supposed to do. Long-term solutions, not just knee-jerk reactions like fences or making a street one-way. Those don't solve the long-term issues. They're not one-way until the town does something. And I think the town is getting a reputation now of not doing anything. Golf course, streets, parking, you name it. And I agree with some of those speakers. The town is getting a bad reputation, but it's up to this board to decide. Put a sidewalk on Ridgeway and on Sutton, negotiate a road, get us some parking, don't penalize the good business. Some of things have been announced, been punitive for the people who live there and for the businesses. But come up with some good long-term solutions. Maybe this new planner needs to kind of walk the streets on them. But long-term, new solutions, not these knee-jerk reactions, not making something one-way, just postpone the problem. That's it. Jill and I were competitors in the furniture business for years and years, but we're on the same page. Still, we're friends, aren't we? All right, that's a citizen comment. Now we move on. And we'll have the second citizen comment.
So John. We'll skip under four if you don't have anything. Consent agenda will consist of 5A for H. 5A will be a call for public area for the Cheshire Master Plan Revision. 5B will be a call for public area for text amendment, Chapter 5, Section 5.17 Mobile Retail Matters. 5C will be a resolution accepting dimension of two vehicles from the city of Greensboro to town Black Mountain Public Use Plan Department. 5D will be amended property storm cleaning grant project ordinance, resolution to a step to state cash flow, loan for round three funding and budget amendments as presented and recommended. 5E will be a resolution to apply for the Economic Administration Disaster Supplemental 2025 Radiance Capital Program. 5F, consideration of grant application to Dogwood Health Foundation for matching funds. 5G, revised resolution to apply for Multi-Department Commerce Small Business Infrastructure Grant Program for downtown store market improvements. And finally, 5H will be a resolution to appoint a town manager as chief of finance.
There were funding items here, and there were several of them, where we were going to different agencies for looking for money. And I just wanted to follow up. Last fall, Archie and I and Ryan came in and presented a package to pick out Monique Weaver. She's the professor of the Ford County University of Tax Relief, also at the University of Southern California. And we gave you at that time a list of several different agencies outside of FEMA. And I was just wondering, I've never heard anything on them. I was wondering where, that's been 10 months ago.
So we're applying for the funds that are available to us, and that's your answer?
But I mean, why did we do that last fall?
Because they weren't available to us.
They were, those agencies were available. This, this, we were just simply saying.
The funds were not available to us last fall, Mr. Mayor.
They were funds there, and they were available, because Monique said they were. And I'm just saying that you didn't follow through on that.
I did follow through on that. I'm having this conversation right now. Those funds were not available. If they were available, you'd have them on your agenda, but...
I actually disagree on that.
Honest to me, you disagree, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, exactly right.
Absolutely, honest to me.
All right, do you hear a motion about consent agenda?
I would like to adopt the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion of any particular items? Not all favor.
Aye.
Ouch. Now, all right, we don't have any brothers here, so now we've got the second citizen comment. Go back in order, which goes signed up, which is Sykes Ray.
Do you have any other council members? I'm in Sykes Ray, 25, Manchester, Selwell, I guess, and 25, Manchester. I'm a founder and volunteer for Village Cheshire, in the same property where I grew up in the 70s and 80s, when I called it tennis town. In 1998, this town adopted a TMD zoning ordinance and approved the master plan for Cheshire. From that moment, my responsibility has been clear: to follow up the ordinance and the plan. Section 4.4.11.5 of the TMD ordinance states, "Public streets shall..." shall provide access to all lots. For 27 years, that standard has guided my work. Following the town's approval, I have platted, built numerous public streets: Keats, Wordsworth, Emerson, Cheshire Drive, East Market, Shakespeare, Sorel, Dunn, Longfellow, Chaucer, Brown, Whitman, Lane, and Jane J. Detroit. Each was built to the town's standards and inspected by the town and accepted by the town. In 2015, Jacob's Cottage's neighborhood was master planned under the TMD zoning. The plaque of Fay Jones Lane and Rantis Lane was approved and recorded in 2016. These streets were built to the same standards as the Cheshire Street before then. Yet today, I uphold the same ordinance language, language that has governed this development for nearly three decades. Suddenly, no longer applies that public streets shall provide access to all lots. Somehow, no longer carries the same meaning. Let me be clear: Jacob's Cottage is not a new development. It is not the line in the sand or no more spinning on new developer streets. It is the continuation of the master plan of interconnected streets forming the village of Cheshire. Fay Jones Lane and Rantis Lane are a vital part of the network. Council members, this is not just about me, but it's about the homeowners and families who trusted this process, who have invested their futures here because they believe the town's word and its ordinances and its something. And let's not forget the larger picture. Cheshire has already generated over 80 million in property value, providing significant ongoing property tax revenue as well as reoccurring sales taxes for its local merchants. Another 50 million in development is still to come. The town is glad to receive its revenues, yet now hesitate to uphold its own ordinance. Tonight, I am asking you to be fair, be insistent, and to do what is right.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Please accept Fay Jones Lane as registered as town public streets, just as you have accepted every other street in Cheshire.
Air, air. After Matthew.
After Matthew, who denied Fay Jones Lane, I'm here to urge you to vote negative on my vote A and vote positive on your solutions table concerning acceptance of Fay Jones Lane's ordinance. I would briefly summarize why I think such a decision to deny acceptance creates division in our community. The residents of Jacob's Cottage's development assume the same tax responsibilities as every resident in this community. If the town does not accept these roads, we are paying for services not delivered. We pay our taxes like everyone else. In addition, Jacob's Cottage's residents rely upon and expect the same level of access to town services and infrastructure afforded to other residents. Denying acceptance of our two roads will create a subgroup of residents, especially those of us who are here or are senior citizens, and we would feel that we are subject to deterioration. And I would hate to see the appearance of this in our community. Finally, well, first, emergency preparedness planning and response, of course, is something we continue to think about. And first responders really depend upon an integrated network of public roads to perform their duties. And this is necessary to ensure public safety and security, no matter where you live in Black Mountain. Rantis and Fay Jones Lane seem to be part of the town's responsibility to enable a strong public road system, creating barriers to receiving public emergency services to cause unmortified and unnecessary harm to Jacob's Cottage's residents. And finally, I wanted to talk about the budget planning process. I know, having worked in federal government, it's a really dynamic time right now. We don't know whether money will be released or not, and what the conditions are. But I would like to see the town holistically plan for contingencies and management across all departments, and not make a decision on an ad hoc basis back at the envelope calculation of the possible cost of maintaining two very small roads. In the spirit of open information and fostering increased trust with the town government, our community should first hear from you about the budget situation and options to be made. In closing, I want to thank you for your dedication to the role being of Black Mountain and your service to all Black Mountain citizens. Thank you.
Next, Bob Hardy.
Good evening. My name is Bob Hardy. I live at 5 Rantis Lane with my wife Diana. We moved up here from the coast five years ago, partly to get away from the humidity and maybe the hurricanes, our timing. But we're very happy here, and we're going to stay. The issue tonight on these Cheshire Village roads is very straightforward to me. Are you going to follow through on the town's promise made in the original planning process, or are you going to turn your back on that? You received many letters from our residents, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'll point out one about Margaret Bower. She highlights an undeniable fact, the significant tax revenues. There's no question about that. This community is, I wouldn't say donating, is paying substantial tax revenues, and I think it deserves a little bit more in return. You know, they far outstrip the potential costs of plowing 400 guards of roads when we have a snowstorm. To put that in context, 400 guards is less than a lap around a running track. So it's not a big deal. You've got letters from Dr. Matthew, Eric Mallow, who's going to be speaking in a moment, Bill Bauer. They make the case for this minimal burden on town resources compared to the benefits of having that community in Black Mountain. So I don't want to sound like a broken record, but there's one more letter that I thought was particularly telling, and that's Lisa Lamb that wrote a letter that underscores another undeniable fact, and that is, the residents in this whole community are giving back in many ways in addition to these property taxes. Volunteer work, hurricane relief efforts, and I don't think we're asking for very much in return. We just want the town to follow through and do what was envisioned in the planning documents of many years ago. You've heard that from Sykes Ray, so I won't belabor it. or are you going to turn your back on that? You received many letters from our residents, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'll point out one of them, Margaret Bowers, her. She highlights an undeniable fact, the significant tax revenues. There's no question about that. This community is donating, is paying substantial tax revenues, and I think it deserves a little bit more in return. You know, they far outstrip the potential costs of plowing four hundred yards of roads when we had a snowstorm. To put that in context, four hundred yards is less than a lap around a running track. So it's not a big deal. You've got letters from Dr. Matthew, Eric Mados, who's going to be speaking in a moment, Bill Bauer, they make the case for this minimal burden on town resources compared to the benefits of having that community in Black Mountain. So I don't want to sound like a broken record, but there's one more letter that I thought was particularly telling, and that's Lisa Lamb that wrote a letter that underscores another undeniable fact, and that is, the residents in this whole community are giving back in many ways in addition to these property taxes. Volunteer work, hurricane relief efforts. And I don't think we're asking for very much in return. We just want the town to follow through and do what was envisioned in the planning documents of many years ago. You've heard that from Sykes Ray, so I won't belabor it. And he has set out in his letter the undisputed historical and legal reasons for you to do the right thing. And I'll conclude by telling you what the right thing is to do, and that's accept these two lanes into the town's streets. That's all we need to hear. You know, I don't know whether there's any real question about it. We haven't really heard anything, certainly nothing persuasive to the contrary. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You must sign that prize, Sykes. Jesse Gardner.
Yeah, I believe he has a second comment.
Verbatim.
Eric Mados.
Thank you. My name is Eric Mados. I am a permanent resident of nine Fay Jones Lane with my beautiful, heartfelt care for Black Mountain. Ron and your soul and all Black Mountain Town Council members, I'm giving my voice to those of any other residents of the Cheshire community that are requesting the town to accept Fay Jones Lane and Rantis Lane as the town's network of public streets. If the folks' motion to deny acceptance of the two aforementioned roads on financial grounds, that is, that accepting the roads would put a financial burden on the town, appears to me to have no merit. I haven't seen the financial analysis behind it, so I made my own financial analysis. Roads are in excellent condition, and Rantis Lane in particular is essential. The new had been repaved as part of the repair work undertaken following tropical storm Helene. This repair work didn't cost the town any money whatsoever. So I'd like to share my financial analysis with you. Black Mountain currently manages resources and infrastructure to maintain something on the order of sixteen point seven five trillion miles a road. That's based on an average of two and a half linear miles a road per square mile in rural America, and Black Mountain's footprint is six point seven square miles. The two roads in question comprise a total length of approximately three hundred sixty yards or zero point two miles. I actually pasted off last night to make sure I was right. Surely an extremely small addition to the town's road network. My understanding is that road maintenance consists primarily of plowing streets after a heavy snowfall. The annual average total snowfall in Black Mountain is twelve inches. If there's a heavy snowfall requiring streets to be plowed, it's rare. Let's assume that Rantis and Fay Jones Lane would only need to be plowed six times per year. I think you'd agree that plowing an additional zero point two miles a road six times per year for a total of one point two miles would not be particularly burdensome with respect to either time or money. An additional point I want to make is that Mayor Sobel stated during the May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four Town Council meeting that he felt it was time to establish a new precedent for the town not climatically accepting responsibility for new roads. Actually, a decision that I have a question anyway. But that statement should not apply to Rantis and Fay Joneses. They are not new roads. They preexisted, they preexisted with the mayor's statement. Not accepting these roads, first fulfill the town's requirements one hundred percent, would simply be wrong. It would be basically changing the rules that became and admitted that became. That's unfair. That's morally wrong. I sincerely believe that acceptance of Fay Jones Lane and Rantis Lane is the right decision for all the reasons before. Acceptance would be a great benefit to the Cheshire community members, all of whom you represent, and I thank you in advance for your time and consideration.
Different public comments. The point to be moving is, should I finish business, which is talking about this Fay Jones and Rantis Lane? Before we begin that, I'd like to go ahead and say that yes, this comment I made, fact is made. As we look down the road, this town is about to go ahead and come to grips with some of the expenses that a lot of these new developments to them all, all that. Now, I realize that they do provide money, but there again, some of that money goes for new fire trucks, new police cars. So my question that I have, and I'm going to direct it to our attorney credit, is is the past precedent here, that will be, is that what we need to provide for these decisions?
Well, I might be able to do this, but I'll look at history a little bit more. I heard this statement, so the gentleman read from the town ordinance using the mandatory term "shall" of the street. Obviously makes sense if the language says "of the street," but there is an intent behind that. But I have here for been asked to look at this, to know if the law just can't else that you have to go legally in certain directions or that you are in a corner and you can't get out. I'm just not going to be able to do that. I do think they've raised a fair question about whether the town has bound themselves to accept something. But again, I need to look at, because that's essentially the position you're taking. And I'm not prepared to tell you whether I'm right or wrong.
When we were talking about the agenda Thursday night, I specifically asked Michelle to do a little longer history so that we all had a common base of knowledge when we were discussing this issue. So would it be helpful if we let Michelle make her presentation on this issue, and then we can discuss more?
Oh yeah, it is, and I will say ultimately, we're regardless of, there's certainly discretion in the town to accept. That's undoubtedly your ability to accept it. The resolution, or what's presented, is in the form of an acceptance. The planning department has just recommended not, assuming the fact that it says, et cetera. You certainly have that discretion. The question is, do you have the discretion to say no? And that is what I'm not prepared to tell you, but it would be helpful to have some of the history.
So Michelle, if you'll go ahead and give us this history, then the council can discuss it. They want to continue to try to make a motion, and I'm sure. Prefer and leave that up to Craig to come back with a future date.
Sure. So as we look back, there's certainly been instances where the town has accepted prior roads. There are instances where prior roads in Rockstown, they have not been accepted, including this prior road in prior years. I think the thing to consider for us, and one of the conversations we brought up following the last council meeting, from a planning perspective, the question was really just to ensure that the road, that the fire code ordinance requirement of the tunnel was approved. And that's the question that I had in the prior meeting. That has since been investigated by the town attorney, and so that is my longer concern. So as far as the planning department is concerned, that was our hang up and what we needed to confirm, whether it needed to comply with current fire code standards or whether it complied, needed to comply with the standard at the time when it was approved. And we got clarification on that. As it relates to the recommendation on this, this is truly, this is one of those scenarios where the planning department gets all applications, whether they're necessarily ours or they're, you know, really focused on other areas of work. So in this conversation, that was a portion of it, really pertains to the planning department. The other department that comes to play on this is Public Works. And Public Works used petition, inspected the roads, and their recommendation was not to take them on because of the future expense to maintain it with a twenty-foot rideaway, with consideration of snow piles or other equipment that may be used on those roads. And so that was the position of the Public Works Department. So we're again left with shall versus may, and what does that mean, and how does that land? And that is a question that I can't answer. That is really a question for Craig. But the short answer is, there have been times that we've accepted prior roads, there have been times that we haven't. The long view is, what happens, and a question that we've been having internally, is, you know, any prior road petition to be accepted into part of public streets, okay? And so are we setting a standard that we're going to be able to continue for other roads that come down this path and want to apply to become public roads? And there are real considerations in that. There are real financial considerations. There are real, what are the factors that would make us say yes here versus no there? And there needs to be, from our view, some consistency in that. And there are a lot of private roads in Black Mountain. There's a lot of area private roads in Black Mountain. Gravel private roads in Black Mountain. So what is the standard we're saying those roads are going to be brought up to? Is it just when they were approved at the time they were put in? And again, the financial consideration for can we afford to maintain them? And that is a question that I can't answer, because that is not something that falls under my purview.
So one more quick thing, then. You know, we have gone ahead and approved roads, but we haven't accepted roads. And so that's going to be, that's two different variations there. So that's one thing that, you know, as the council members discuss this, this is one thing that I'd like, you know, for Craig to come back to us on and say, because of the fact that you set a precedent accepting these patch roads in Cheshire, only therefore he helped to do so.
Right.
Go ahead.
Well, that is a question, and I think that's what matters here. With this though, in your opinion, there's a difference between dedicating a road and accepting it. They've already dedicated it. There's no getting off the plateau. The question is, does the town accept responsibility for it? So for the development, do we have other twenty-foot wide roads that we've taken in as a town? What is the precedent for this particular development?
So I don't believe this road is a twenty-foot wide road.
It's a right there.
Yeah, the right one. It has been, some of the streets over there are town streets and some are not. There is a clear.
Within Cheshire?
Pathway in us. Not within Cheshire, generally in terms of like private street being part of public streets.
That is the information I want to have, is this particular development. Did they have other streets that the town currently maintains? And what streets that within Cheshire that were not? And were they to be dedicated in turnover or wouldn't they be dedicated in turnover? We can get to that, and I can look at those statistics. But again, I wasn't asked the question, do we have the discretion to turn it down?
I believe all the roads currently within Cheshire are.
Private.
Are public.
Public, I'm sorry.
I mean, you know, I I agree with Mayor Sobel that we do need to be more critical in looking at how we're approaching new developments and accepting those roads. It is a much greater financial burden on the town than just surviving.
Right.
However, in this case, because we have accepted all of the other roads in Cheshire, because as far as where this is, the last road is left for acceptance, you know, it makes sense for us to report and including what we started within Cheshire and looking at new developments for setting this new precedent. I do want to call out that I did a little research today, and we have over two hundred roads in town, and thirty-six percent of them are private. And for all the residents who live on private roads, they're not less than, you know, considered than less than those of the public roads. That's just the way the roads is works. But in this case, I do absolutely support accepting these roads as public roads.
So all of us got elected in twenty twenty. I'm sorry, my voice is just, I'm playing allergies. I don't know if you're listening, right? So all of us got elected in twenty twenty, and you can understand that the money that every municipality gets a pittance to take care of their roads. Your references to Powellville, for example, is nothing. So I remember that first year we had, it's been, what do you call it, nine, I don't remember, in the middle of this one year. In that particular year, I think we were spending a hundred thousand dollars on both units. And council member hated the math, and it was going to take us forty-five years to repay all the town roads at the rate we were going, which is bad.
So. Where's the, you know, for forty-five years?
Forty-five years is a bad thing. So at that, the next time we started doing budgets, we had our first budget cycle. We felt like we wanted to up it, all of that, and we started putting in five hundred thousand every year. And that just came from the general fund. Nobody was helping us with Powellville, which I can't talk. Doesn't hurt. Don't worry, I'm not a hater. So we started doing that, just so we could move forward with these road maintenance issues faster. Now, of course, this past year has had a budgetary nightmare, and I don't think I explained to you how our budget situation is. And that's why we can't get back our budget this year. Gosh, can't remember numbers, right?
About two or twenty thousand payday this year.
Yeah, and all told, it's a lot. We didn't have extra money from the general fund to shift over to start paying roads again. And he said, there's a couple things that don't constitute this, and so we got a lot of email, and I've been through them all, and I've been highlighting their points and writing my own questions and so on, so I took it all very seriously. Number one, I never look on anything that affects our taxpayers in terms of how much tax, property tax they pay. To me, that's just a non-issue. And I get it that you all are doing your fair share of this, and you're doing volunteer work all over town, and you're probably eating at restaurants. You're wonderful citizens. But my thought process is not, these people pay more property tax, so they can take good care of them. Every citizen and every road in this town, in my mind, gets the same consideration, even if they're a little lower in income than you. So just wanted to put that out there. In terms of factors that down the road, we're going to have to prioritize which roads we accept into our town. To me, this is the epitome of the kind of place we were born to support. High density, we pay for our block for roads. To me, we should encourage and incentivize folks to build like that, whether it's Cheshire or other developments, because it really is a good sound use of our infrastructure dollars. So having said all that, it's not, I appreciate, we got spreadsheets from, I mean, it was very impressive about how much snow revealed for removal by compost for cattle or something, I forget. In rate, it was very impressive. Not every citizen, not every immigrant, not every citizen in town is able to produce such thoughtful work and well-crafted messaging to us.
And councilman Cam just added that, but that was part of what was brought up by the Public Works Department. We don't anticipate any additional funding through Powellville. And in the aftermath of Helene, we could be looking at less funding than we have in the prior. So again, when you start thinking about having to make a decision that's really in broad public interest, what happens if the other thirty-six percent of these roads decide they want a petition to become public roads? That's really the question, and the struggle. So that's, those are the other two factors that were, to your point, that we're on the Public Works Department.
Do you have this Jane Jakes Road?
No, it's called, it's the town election. Did the others have comments?
I would say, you know, I was on board when Cheshire was coming online. But I've known one that relates to you as well. But it's been my experience and that when we deal with any issue involving the creation of Cheshire, we created our own unique zoning district at that time, I don't remember the district correct. That you have performed with the expectation that everything will be a public, dedicated to the town. And as such, I do think we need to accept these two roads tonight to honor our commitment to them. So again, because as Joe Tyson was saying earlier, we are as good as our word. And we promise that, there's an expectation to fulfill it. Now, I do think your future concern about taking additional roads is valid. And I do think that we need to make it clear that there's always an expectation to apply, but that the town is not compelled to accept. I think we need to make that clear in the applicants going forward.
We can certainly start to create a ranking system or some type of determination system to decide what are higher priority versus lower priority if we already have applications. That is certainly something that we can create.
So that was my question. Councilor Stone, during that time, those that implied that our streets were going to be private.
We, I mean.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I'm always win size, you know, when I've been on the sword and the other issue. We've always put it in fast, kind of based on knowledge of the issue.
Well, the first time we came up, was that May, did somebody say it was May?
I believe that's correct.
I said, have we promised them anything? And it was told, no, we haven't. So I'm, I'm as confused as anybody. But I think it's not just me.
So my thing is, I have, to me, it becomes more of a issue for me in my mind. And so I would have to agree with council member. Hey, councilor Stone, that would be a very extreme.
But I do want to commend Dan for her comment about how, how staff and the town street folks. We do treat, we do our best to treat everyone as fair as possible and to do what's right. We do not prioritize people on how much they pay taxes or anything like that. And thank you very much.
And if you'd like for us to investigate a prioritization system, we can certainly take a look at that. If you have some suggestions, I'd be delighted to do that.
That'd be great.
That was something I come with, yeah. I think seemingly the key word today is consistency. But also we make sure that we're able to move forward with intentional consistency about where our policy or where our best practices are going to be moving forward. So just clarity, I'll have it for everyone involved and for future councils.
And Craig, if you would, it would be nice to look at the sites made to say that they've done 80 million dollars, you know, to look for another 50 million ahead and to find out where that dividing line will be. Is what we've accepted or what we've approved through that T and D or not? Well, because that's going to directly influence where the number we accept, some of these future roads.
There's one way to look at it.
Well, I will say that I think this is why there's been lawyers in the world is that you can, you can have one lawyer argue one thing and another lawyer argue another. So I'm not sure. In the absence of a development agreement, and that is a tool that cities can use for itself is to say, I'm going to do X in return for Y. Right? So we don't have that for this development. But in the absence of an ordinance says we shall take over, we shall accept. That, I don't know if there is an obligation there. And it doesn't matter that we spent 60 days versus 80 days or whatever, that the obligation somehow rises. That's why I'm not prepared to tell you you're in a box. These are very, this, my box is a legal box. Your policy box of what is fair, what should we do, what is the history? These are all policy decisions. That's why you have discretion to accept tonight, regardless of what I say about, hey, you can't say no box. So you've already expressed policy reasons, why do you want to take on, right? But I'm not here to say you can't, I'm here to say we can. So when you ask me, is there a point that you spend enough money that it becomes an obligation to take on?
No, no, I didn't want that. What I said was, I would just give you the example, they spent, but they're going to spend 50, 50 million more. And my question is then, are we contractually involved in that? Is there been some, have there been some law agreements signed with them that would then put us in the same bind?
The development agreement. I think you would have said at the very beginning of the history, that we have a development.
Yeah, there is no development agreement. And I just want to clarify, in terms of talking a lot of prioritization system, what I'm hearing from you all to make sure I understand, part of that prioritization would be for high-density development. In places where we're really making the highest use of plants, that would be one of the areas that you look for for prioritization. If you're going to take on new rights, am I hearing that right?
I think that's compelling, but I'd like to.
But that's really not consideration.
Yeah, okay. I think we can use that mechanism for to emphasize. I need more time to digest that.
Yeah, you're right. Just want to make sure that we're in the same.
So I would ask too, that we are able to look at that ordinance, the shall, and see if we need to update that to be more reflective of having increased discretion going forward.
Well, off the top of my head, if you had to say, what does that mean? I think that means that the road has to be publicly dedicated and available for us to be able to take over if we choose. It is still public in the sense that it is publicly dedicated. I'm not sure that language necessarily ties our hands to we have to accept, unless there's other language in there that speaks to we must accept.
Well, I would say that was actually, so that that statement does not necessarily create a given that you are accepting as public right there. So I came here to say tonight, it sounds like we have enough folks to go ahead and bring these roads online to the town system. But prior to your point of mine, we're trying to look at that wording. I think that's worth doing at our next meeting or October, November. So that if we need to update something, I want to know what it means and what it says. I think that question is one that needs to be answered for class and for everyone.
Yeah, it's just something that you may regret.
And there's a tiny thing also about accepting, you know, something can be publicly dedicated and then planned on that road would be 100 units. And you wouldn't want to take over the maintenance of it and accept it in its final form until most of it was built out and the road was brought up to snuff after all the restructuring draft, I think. You know, and there may be some point in time along the line that there's not enough houses that were fact-built because the development didn't complete itself and you would never take it over, so.
We just want to think, yeah, this deserves a full conversation.
And that would be then for the development agreement. That's where you can put all this in place.
It's not simple.
Yeah.
Well, I would argue that the state was trying to, I know these folks waited two hours or something for it to go on our last meeting for us to table this. So we're here to make something, we've got enough to go on for this, but I'd like to see this happen back.
Do you have your motion?
Yeah, I would like to move to accept the position to dedicate the Jane, Dave Jones Lane and raise this lane to the town of Wainers and Public Works.
And it's moved to accept the offer of dedication.
Thank you.
Because they have technically already dedicated the plat. They have gone on to indicate further dedication to design petitions. It's to accept the offer of dedication.
To accept the offer to dedicate Dave Jones Lane to the town of Wainers.
And just following what I think, follow up what Craig said about, yeah, 100 developments and all this. This is my dub right in here. We've got a prime example, one of the wrong, west of town, June, we're only serving. It was not built.
Development agreement.
So part of the conversation issue, that's the difference between a master plan and a development agreement. Because I know we have a public agreement.
I think it may be beneficial to have a work session to just talk through any of these things. Make sure that we're all on the same page and that definitions are clear. And so there's not as much confusion because I think if you do that work session, it arms you all better to the council members discussing.
Any more discussion?
And for folks to know when they're petitioning, what they're walking into.
Any more discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Passes. The power of the people.
Hi, Anne, happy to read for these changes. I hope you all have a chance to examine them. But the short version is, the definition of sidewalk seating would be an area adjacent to directly in front of a street level eating or drinking establishment, located within the sidewalk area of a public right-of-way and used exclusively for dining, drinking, and circulation of customers. It would exclude benches and similar furniture that is directly against the wall of the building and removed from the sidewalk area. So kind of act of that conversation around ice cream shop. That's the portion that we will have. Whether that be a bench or chairs that they have there or whatever that may be, it's not a public right-of-way traffic, it's building, but not included. And then the other accessible section of this, as it relates to what sidewalk seating would comply with, freely clear passage area on the sidewalk that's minimum four feet wide between the outermost edge of the seating area barrier and the closest point of all fixtures. So from the outer spot where they are to the first fixture that comes in on the street side of the sidewalk. And we have included that removable post-and-road style station barrier will be there just because they're easier to take up at the end of the night and put away instead of something that may be a more permanent fixture on that sidewalk and the barrier. And we will renew sidewalk seating permit that includes that if alcoholic beverages are to be served on any day of the week or at any time of the day in the sidewalk seating area, a copious rule, an ABC permit will be attached to the application. The permit would be a site plan, it would, and later we clear a site plan can be on the back of that. We don't need, you don't need to hire somebody to do a fancy site plan. We just need a designated area. Acknowledgement that the entire post-and-road area system will be removed by the permit holder at the end of business hours on any day where you will have to proceed to set up again. That's why we show you that type of barrier so it can come down at the end of the evening. Acknowledgement that the area will be used exclusively for dining, drinking, and circulation of customers. And then the final change is, if there's sufficient room to establish outdoor seating, a parking space, if there's sufficient room to establish outdoor seating, a parking space or spaces in a parking lot can be converted to a parlet through a joint agreement among property and business owners. A parlet is a cordon off area for seating and dining and it typically includes significant landscaping or hardscaping to enhance the coordinating, to make it noticeably clear that the area is not for vehicles. And that really is in there for, what if you have a business but you don't have the ability to do sidewalk dining? You can work with your neighbors, work with the town to say, we're going to use essentially create a parlet. So that is the long and the short of what we're looking at.
Is there your motion?
That's what I'm saying. So I'm willing to ask this kind of, at the request of a few business owners and some businesses who would like to serve alcohol in their seating that is in the right way over the sidewalk. The intent, and my intent has always been to, to allow that to happen within their, you know, next of their business. But also, I do not want to create additional burden on ice cream shops and maybe coffee shops, things like that, that they already have some sort of seating up front and is used currently. So I appreciate the changes that we made from last month to, you know, ensure that, things like that. And that included here. What I'm still concerned about is the removable rope for, I know that it is required in this for ABC permits that have that out there. And I can certainly see the, I would say, the concern around that as well. But I, you know, I still think that there are coffee shops and things like that that are serving beverages with tables on the sidewalk that do not serve alcohol. And so I don't really understand the need for the rope for those businesses. And you don't want to add an additional burden for them. So what I would recommend is that we update language on 5.18, section B, to the required removable post-and-rope type barrier to only be for restaurants that serve, or restaurants or bars that serve alcohol. And if we felt we needed to do that, the other services I think might, you know, be helpful to have a rope style barrier, if there was a late service, you know, where there was serving food or something like that, to have that barrier. But you know, it is important for me, who is very much in support of this, to show that we're not adding additional burden to coffee shops and cafes that, you know.
I think this is a crucial point about the rope to be for table service and for alcoholic beverages. Because my read of this was that's the only kind of this would apply. There's not table service and it's not outdoor dining, but am I missing something?
I guess theoretically it could be outdoor dining, you could buy inside and take it outside. There's table service. So that's very counter-table service.
So sorry, I'm, I'm trying to think, counter-service.
Yeah.
That's, okay. Okay, so that's service, table service, and then location and outward. Okay? Thank you for clarifying that. I'm fine with what you've suggested.
So to clear, so an amendment to 5.18, section B, removable post-and-road style station barrier only when table service or alcoholic beverages are served by these bars?
Yeah, I think, should we define table service? Or, because I wonder if you and I were even there or anyone.
I think, okay, I said the wrong thing. I think table service is a server is coming out, taking your order versus counter-service. We walk up, we order, and you take a number, okay?
That would be my recommendation.
Do you have a touch?
Yes.
Can I, you have a brief clip of your motion to accept this and with the change?
I would move to accept, text. Text amendment, chapter 1, section 1.2.3, chapter 4, section 4.7.7.2, section, or, chapter 4, section 4.7.1.4, and then chapter 5, section 1.1.8, the LSC code, and chapter 4, alcoholic beverages, section 4-1, and then town road occurrences as a matter. Okay, enough?
All right, any more discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Passes your amendment.
Does this seem like a person to attack?
Yeah, as soon as it's, if we take this text amendment, especially in the morning.
And I assume it would allow grace period to be a little bit.
We have 30 days, 30 K grace period.
60 days.
60 day? Do you like that?
I mean, if there is any.
Look, I move that we, we amend to also specify that there's a 60-day grace period for businesses to get any work and supplies in.
60-day grace period with a permit and a permit. Whatever.
We're having to do that, I think you need to check your motion.
Oh, we can put it out there, so everyone will know.
I think we got to do that on the motion up there.
No, I think we're fine.
I like it, yeah.
Is there some more administration thought?
8C.
Listen to the camera.
8C will be, this is one you said before, oldest and grandest public service company in North Carolina, Inbridge, which used to be, used to be struck operating a tank of gas utility system in the town of Black Island, worked here 30 years, just as a. what yet to work, but it was not specified in that here.
Well, it is on the cover, not the time.
Okay.
Uh, thank you for that. Yes, blue would be, blue would be, um, doesn't need to be.
Well, maybe no surprise, I have my, like, line by line, if you have any questions here or feedback, I'm going to start with the question. I want to start on page two of nine. At the bottom, it starts, this franchise may continue since page three of nine, agreement shall also permit complete exercise rights raised here in without the need for additional permits to the town. And that was struck from the last draft we got last month, but it's back in. So, I wanted to understand what implications that might have, why it's back in, what, what we might glean from that in this study.
Well, I'll say this, that most public utilities and certainly governmental type institutes, those in this case that have a power of condemnation, this agreement is supposed to set the framework of all things, so if you don't have, they don't have to come ask for a permit. This is the permit.
So, I think you're, okay, so the read is, it would need an initial permit because everything should be spelled out, be expected in this document. Okay, that's fine, that's all I needed to know, I was confused why it was struck and back in, but, um, something's started. Well, below that, in section three A, we have in blue imminent, it reads, I'll just catch the phrase, business. However, in the town soul, reasonable discretion should such work by the community located in a public way appropriate for imminent future construction of a sidewalk. And I wanted some sense of what timeline imminent would indicate for this. So, basically, this is if they just dropped something, we want to have the ability to put in a sidewalk in the future as the mayor is out there for, but they came back to us through this morning saying, we don't want you to do it thirty years from now, this is only if you're imminent and you mean it will.
Well, there is a difference between a plan, you know, the DOT, the past projects that they planned out that are, you know, twenty years and it's not happening. So, I think imminent is meant to say that it's actually only the first way to go versus a plan for future construction. That's, that's my understanding of that.
I would come on that, so we have an ice cream plan that I think would fix all our sidewalk locations, or idea that that one, now we may have wanted to add some utilities and, we do have that.
Yeah, for example, the I twenty-six, well, this is on the far right of the bridge, people who plan for that, so I think they want, they wanted to know that it is not just a plan, but it is, there is now contrast with some things, it is in the works, not that it's just.
So, we volley back and forth somewhat nowadays, so this is the original for, you know, the updated thirty year agreement, we came back to them with this language, and this is their volley back, and they're saying, mm-hmm.
Correct.
We'll make this imminent.
Imminent.
Okay.
And I think all that takes is your town manager to say, this is now imminent. Right?
Yeah.
And with the, with the understanding that when he says it's imminent, that it's actually the works versus the, just as on a piece of paper somewhere that's never been there. So, that word doesn't throw me off because of, I understand a lot of it, but.
Sure. Uh, okay. My next question follows, actually, within the same very long sentence, that the company shall reasonably restore such area with such material, including an aggregate base, to allow for such future sidewalk, plus suches. Such material just means aggregate base, or such material, including aggregate base, such material to support a sidewalk in future. I'm probably overthinking it, but this is what I'm hearing, I think, so.
I don't, I don't see the removal of appropriate actually advancing all that much, but I think appropriate is a little bit in the eye of all verb what's appropriate, so I think it's just due to, because it's a.
Okay, so such material would.
Allow.
To.
And again, this is, this is going to be driven by public forces and town management saying these things.
The other thing I noted at the bottom of the page, section three D, the Enbridge removed the phrase or will be located, so this is about other utilities, the company shall make reasonable best effort supporting other utilities and providers which use or are located in the public, right, public way. So, they read it, remove or will be located, just so the documents are out of the public.
That is your change.
Those are my questions. Oh, one more, sorry, section fifteen, page eight of nine, fifteen, the all other ordinances and causes of ordinances in conflict here with are hereby repaid. So, this just means they're not bound to any other ordinances that we have, are written on the back, is entirely closed from this option.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Done? Okay. Anybody else wants to go through, as you made comments, changes, questions? Is that a motion to accept it?
Move to approve the order, the scrambling of the service company, Oklahoma, or their successors, and signs, who like to use, of the boys, of the town of Black Mountain, North Carolina, for construction operations of the airfield system in unnecessary needs for transmitting and distributing gas, but consent, work period of thirty years.
Need more discussion? If not, on favor?
Aye.
Passage to Anderson.
Eight D, resolution to determine South Ridge Way, Avenue One, South, the intersection of Southern Avenue and South Ridge.
So, when you spoke last month, one of the things we discussed with going back and having a meeting with Active Mobility, and one of the additional things that we add to that, because I believe it should be a part of any good planning process, is the community meeting. And so, you all should have gotten tonight from me a synopsis of the major concerns and comments from both our meeting with Active Mobility Commission in mid-August and the major comments and concerns from our one-way study community meeting. I'll say, twenty-four, twenty-four folks there presented as excellent. I think anytime you have community come out and have a conversation like this is win, that's the way policy and processes should work. So, there's a lot there, but I think it's all good information. And happy to read through, just hit the highlights of it, I think you've all seen the Active Mobility comments. The bigger ones from the community meeting, there were questions about funding for potential grants, or potential grant funding for sidewalks. There were a lot of conversations about sidewalks. The last sidewalk that was put in town was in twenty twenty-two. There were questions about connecting sidewalks and sections, analyzing the cost for sidewalks, all those sorts of things. Concerned about there not being a divider, cyclist concerns, business concerns around customers, cars only being able to access from one side, just talk with the post office and what that would do for someone trying to go to the post office. It was also pointed out that the post office won't allow employees to walk on that street because of the safety concern. One of the things that came up, and we did a little research on, was around school buses, this discussion around that they can't turn at Broadway or Richardson, and they can't manage to curb getting NC nine. So, we reached out to the public schools and, and the reality of that is there's one bus that's from the middle school that actually makes a stop on this road. So, there's one stop.
Currently.
Currently on this road. The primary, elementary, and high school all acknowledge that they use it as a convenience route to avoid poles and, and center lanes, uh, raised center lanes. So, it is a route that is used for convenience by our public schools.
But, just to get really clear, not that they could not.
No, 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 no.
They can, they.
Yeah, in our conversation then, it was not, this is a route we have to use, there's one pickup on that route now. And I assume that child, women, children at high school, there may be additional children coming later, but as of today, there is one stop and it's from the middle school.
Yeah, but that's not really the main concern, the main concern is us is turning. That was the main concern.
Right, that's because they use it as a convenience route to avoid poles and center.
I've never heard that in popular YouTube principle there, talking some of the teachers and some of the stuff. And when you come out of Richardson Boulevard, you're turning right, you've got a telephone pole right there, and if there's anybody in that turn lane on the westbound of US seventy, they cannot make that turn.
Right.
And the same way of coming back, uh, uh, from license, when they're, when they're coming out there, they cannot make that turn. So, so to frame it in the, in the light of convenience.
That would exactly be used by the school system.
I think that's a little bit soft.
Well, that would exactly be used by the school system, that it is a convenience route for all of the classes.
Well, it's amazing how they, how they, how they've used that route for, for years and years.
Yeah, absolutely not disputing that. Other questions that came up were around why South Bend was considered the least impact when there's a North Bend option, can parking be included, traffic light being compromised? The city does indicate some slight signal changes that would happen to some of the traffic lights. I will tell you that, and the mayor's over there, his comments are included on this as well, I will tell you that for us, when we're looking at, at whether to recommend something or not, some of the kind of basic tenets for us are, does this reflect our current policies and priorities as adopted by council? And in this case, it does. There's always the consideration between the benefits and the detriment of any project. And obviously, turning a road into a one-way road, there are going to be concerns, there are going to be people that don't like it, there are going to be all of those things. For us, in this case, this really comes down to a safety issue. We heard stories of people, and we have heard stories of folks that have to jump dishes to try to keep from getting hit by cars, people that live there and they see an uptick in the number of people walking on that road. There's one that she referred earlier, council, that she can't walk out of her front door without being concerned that she's going to get hit by a car. And for us, what that means is that human safety trumps the other aspects when we're making a decision like this. One of the things, the other pieces is that, you know, this is, as I said, consistent with all of our adopted plans, and that was in the staff report that we provided you all last month. I do think it's important to say that this does not mean this is the end game for what would happen on the street. This means that this is an immediate solution to life, health, safety concern on that street. I think we all agree that sidewalks would be excellent there, we have to get to a place that that can be put in.
So, as proposed, we made an option for sidewalks to be added there, can you speak to that?
Yeah, so essentially what happens is the roads, this incident just kind of gets the lanes, the strapping gets shifted, right? So, you would still have area to the side to add sidewalk, at the point at which you could afford to prioritize adding sidewalk. This was never intended, I said this in the community meeting, this is not a, I'm not, by any means, someone said it tonight, I was back there agreeing with him, it's not perfect, this is absolutely not perfect. I wish that what we can do is put a one-way street with a divider, pedestrian and, and bike lane, but right now, we're not in a financial position to do that, and we still have people on that street who are concerned that they're going to get hit and killed by a car. So, it's, it's one of those scenarios where we can wait until we have all the funding in place and all the things in place to do it perfectly, the risk in that is that someone's going to get killed on that street. And that is for us, when something is already consistent with our adopted plans, with what's been laid out, and the plans have been adopted by council, not a recommendation that we're going to make.
Every, just about every street that does not have a sidewalk in Black Mountain, people can walk out of their house and have that same concern that they're going to get killed. This, there are, where John lives up there, there's plenty of people that walk along those streets, walking their dogs, no sidewalks up there. This is not just germane to South Ridge Way.
I don't think that.
And another thing on South Ridge Way, if you, if you really want to go ahead and, and attack the issue, move the fence back two to three feet, and you've got an aggregate base there where people will walk for four hundred feet, then you get to the hill, and when you go up the hill, because we have a lot of way, we simply carve back four, five feet away from the road and put traffic bond up all the way to Center Street. Then you put a crossing there, and then you go up to each side of the South Ridge Way, because otherwise, if you don't, you're going to end up there with the open oven and with the Sunshine Pharmacy and the parking that they got up there. But you can put a sidewalk going up the hill on the, on the west side, then you cross over to Center Street, and you just simply go ahead and put a aggregate base up to US seventy, and now you've got a sidewalk, and you've eliminated the issue of this safety issue.
Well, let me, let me speak to the fence comment first of all. You know, I understand that these issues can be uncomfortable, like they certainly can, but we as, as a town, as a planning department, have a legal obligation to carry forth enforcement. Failure to do so puts us in a position where there's significant liability on the town. We can't just turn our backs on the basic enforcement of our own ordinances. You can't pick and choose which parts of the state constitution you're going to follow. That fence was in response to a notice violation that had been going on for more than two years without proper enforcement. I will not, that is not a topic that I'm going to debate, it is flat out an absolute enforcement action, it was followed to the letter of notification, and that is what that is, that has nothing to do with the conversation of this becoming a one-way street.
Okay, but if you go ahead and move that sidewalk over, I mean, the fence over, and you could still have, to a separate sidewalk, which you're so concerned about.
If you move that fence, if you move that fence.
And then you have a, then you have a space there for people to walk.
Correct, and if you move that fence three feet, you also have a space for parks to park, which was exactly for the purpose of having to put it there in the first place.
What park, do you ever see the market three feet?
Have you ever seen a car trailer park?
Yeah, you know, you don't got to have that, so, so this is a way to, to address.
So, the, so the bottom line is, though, I want to make sure that you all had all the responses and the conversations, but they're all out, really, really out. And as I said, in a perfect world, there would be sidewalks for them. We are simply not in a position right now that we can implement that unless council wants to make the determination that that is the direction you want to follow and identify the funding that makes that possible, in this case, I would be thrilled to carry it out. In the meantime, we are dealing with a life, health, safety issue that we'd have to have some type of response to. It's not the end of the conversation, it's the beginning.
I wonder responding to the comments about that every street with a sidewalk could come and use in our case, but I do think we have a unique situation here where we're talking about the central business district. And we do expect different kinds of use in the central business district when people are going from business to business, perhaps parking at, you know, the lot down by Hurley Max and trying to make a way around town, have a nice day. But I sort of do think we're dealing with a set of different circumstances than, you know, any other rooted town. However, of course, everyone loves a sidewalk.
Correct. And if you move that fence three feet, you also have a space for parks to park, which was exactly the purpose of having to put it there in the first place.
What park? Do you ever see a market three feet?
Have you ever seen a car trailer park?
Yeah, you don't got to have that. So this is a way to address.
So the bottom line is, I want to make sure that you all had all the responses in the conversation. They're all out, really, really out. And as I said, in a perfect world, there would be sidewalks for them. We are simply not in a position right now that we can implement that unless council wants to make the determination that that is the direction you want to follow and identify the funding that makes that possible. In this case, I would be thrilled to carry it out. In the meantime, we are dealing with a life, health, safety issue that we have to have some type of response to. It's not the end of the conversation, it's the beginning.
I wonder responding to the comments about that every street with a sidewalk could come and be noticed in our case. I do think we have a unique situation here where we're talking about the central business district. And we do expect different kinds of use in central business districts when people are going from business to business. Perhaps parking at, you know, the lot down by Hurley Max and trying to make a run around town, have a nice day. But I sort of do think we're dealing with a set of different circumstances than, you know, any other road in town. However, of course, everyone has a sidewalk on their road. But we have roads that were built with cars for drastically different size expectations of what, how many people were going to live here were totally different. So we're dealing with non-ideal circumstances.
I think that's right. When you're talking about a residential area versus a heavy mixed-use area, those are two very different scenarios. And again, I think everyone in the jury would agree, if we have sidewalks on every single street we have, we would all.
No one's against that.
But it is smart, it's funny to do it. But we do have to determine where the priority areas are, and central businesses is certainly one of those.
But that's not really in the center of central business district.
But it is in the district. And we have maps that.
And so the green sidewalk.
Does it need the districts?
And sidewalk, we can go ahead and move. Is there anything wrong with the fence? What's the issue with it? If in fact, we're, because we've got to live from the whole issue was brought up two years ago, let's get rid of traffic. It's all come down now to pedestrians. That's all I've heard from Facebook and United is it's all, it's all.
That's the most critical issue.
It is without streets, unless there is an issue.
And again, as I said.
And I cannot keep it from one. It should have a way for people deprived to get to the east side of town for longer than I've been alive. My grandmother lived in that house there for over six, 16 years there.
I understand. You mentioned that again.
So this is a way. Otherwise, we're stacking cars up at Richardson Boulevard. We're asking people to park, to go to the post office, and now they got to deal with no traffic. I had to get across the road there. Four of them are going to go up town in Broadway. And they're already backing up to railroad many times.
I think again, this comes down to you all making a determination, what's in the broader public interest. And I think when you adopted plans like Elevate Black Mountain, the comprehensive plan, you indicated in those plans, which is what directs my work, that these were priorities. And I'm following that. If you want to change that, great, tell me what those changes are, adopt them, and we'll move forward with those changes. But as it stands today, everything in this is consistent with our adopted plans and reflects our current policies and priorities that are stated and adopted by the town.
I have a few questions about somebody I didn't raise in those comments and also tonight. What's the feasibility of speed bumps in key locations?
So the biggest concern with speed bumps again comes from public works and their concern with putting speed bumps in any place that they need to make a road or would have to have any kind of power or anything like that. I would say that from a planning perspective, speed bumps would not be top of the advice list for something to put in just in terms of best practice. But there's no, other than those two reasons, you certainly put in speed bumps.
What, can you elaborate more on the?
I think it's just, I'll say broadly, it's just kind of considered a, it's a low-cost option to kind of slow traffic flow, for sure. But it's not considered a progressive move in the way to manage your traffic issues. It's a band-aid. And ultimately, you're going to end up having to do something else.
And then what about, so, you know, I think we're kind of dealing with two different issues. One of them is Ridgeway and one of the sudden. I do read that, as people have mentioned tonight, that what was maybe already a dangerous street to walk down on the sudden is now more dangerous because of the fence. And then on Ridgeway, there's the hill, which is a different issue. And people, you know, frequently walking down from Refresh or from going up Route 84. And, you know, having, you know, everybody that's here and had a cyclist and runner running down Ridgeway frequently. And it is, well, I don't do it very often anymore because it is such a road to. What is the feasibility of expanding the white road? Even just two feet, so there's more room for two cars to pass.
I think from a cost perspective, that's probably one of our more costly options. I don't know that, from what was asked to be pulled from that study, which is what's kind of driving the conversation now, that was not something that was asked to be considered. That's something that we can certainly investigate if we like.
You know, the other part of this conversation, I think, is you know, that I was hoping to have for tonight that was input from the Brown Road about expanding the roadway to be on her back.
We got that started, but I have her back on the Brown Road, sorry.
You know, I think that expanding that easement is something, or yeah, expanding easements is going to continue parking all the way outside. We both, there's lots of room there, so it could potentially widen the road on the southern side and also solve some of the parking issues that we have in that area. You know, I I think that road is incredibly dangerous and I think it requires immediate action. I will say, I am not convinced that turning to one-way, which we talked about several times, people mentioned it being a temporary effect, so we can explore the sidewalk. I think if we're talking about band-aids, you know, then maybe speed bumps are already a more appropriate temporary band-aid. I would love to see a sidewalk go down. I would love to see the sidewalk expanded down sudden and then all the way over to it. I think that, you know, that could be something that I know we're strapped for every day at the moment. But it could be something that we should explore. So I think that that's where I am. However, I do not want to leave tonight keeping a can with no, no at least recommendation to staff to look for other solutions. So, but, you know, that's where I am.
I think that's well said, though. I couldn't say as much as you can be honest with you. I I certainly share the concern that that's a road that needs to be encouraged for the people that live there, people that live through it and all the rest. But I don't know that this one-way proposal, I don't have enough sense of what is going to do to the surrounding traffic flow on Richardson and Broadway. We have that study. I don't, I just don't feel that's an accurate representation of what's going to happen in that. The school bus issue is another concern that I have. I would like to see this pursued. I mean, let's control the speed. Let's start with the speed bumps first. Let's wait and let's hear from the railroad about what we can get access to on that side. And then let's just take it a slow and liberal approach to coming back to this, if we're visiting. I don't, I don't see the, I personally don't see it would make it one-way. I don't see both the short-term benefit or the long-term benefit of reversing in the future, once we do action.
Well, I hope to be clear, there's a lot of discussion of reversing.
Well, yeah, but we did talk about it. The folks out here talked about it.
Sure, I understand in terms of what we were planning. We were talking about a one-way, then initially getting a sidewalk.
So I have a question.
If it were one-way and you have the cars in them on separate, like the disc lane, that would slow traffic, correct? I mean, that would take care of the speed issue.
That is part of the recommendation from the state, yeah.
What concerns me about that, and I'll look to people that actually ride on that street. I'm not comfortable with just paint between the car and the, or truck, whatever, and a bicycle. So, you know, you know more about that than I do. A little more, one piece on the road that can help people, you know, they need to save.
Yeah, I think, I can't remember the name of the lady that spoke earlier, she was talking about a lot of concepts like that. But, you know, there are a lot of things within kind of the school thought she was talking about around some volunteer work she's done for exactly that. It's almost like a DIY divider until you can get to a permanent divider. And across the country, you've been all kinds of things. You've had substantial planning put in that were booked, you've had all sorts of things. So there are options to do things like that.
Alcohol volunteer, do something tactical or really not. Two ways, slow cars, I'll volunteer for you. I'd love to meet you.
To me, there are a couple of downsides of speed bumps that I want to address. One is I think it will just direct towards St. George's. I mean, I've seen this topic in other places I've looked, you put those speed bumps on one road and a parallel road next to it just scares all the traffic. So, I mean, maybe that's the point, that's fine. I don't see how that addresses it unless you're in cyclists who use that road. And we haven't yet discussed how this is impacted with the Fontana Flora way through there. And I thought that our occupancy ability commission had some really important points. And I was prepared to follow their recommendations about adding some sidewalks and directing cyclists more from Richardson and moving forward with one-way, but that doesn't appear to be the direction that the rest of the folks up here are wanting to go.
So I can say more about my thoughts, but if we don't have to, you know.
It's just an emergency I'm feeling about the safety. Like, what can we do now?
Oh, well, I feel that too.
But this seems like the most exciting route.
Yeah, again, is this perfect? Absolutely not. Is it start towards where we need to get? Yes. And at some point, given the financial constraints that we're in as a town right now, we've got to look at things that start moving us in the right direction until we can financially get to the final best direction. And that's really where this came from. Again, this is a study that obviously predates me. I kind of am here to bring it back to you all and carry it through. So I don't necessarily firsthand know the conversations that were taking place that led to this study. But it was a public private study. It was people along that corridor that partnered with the town to conduct this study, which tells me something significant. That hardly ever happens. When private individuals are part of participating in getting a study developed to consider a one-way street, there's concern there. And that, I think, has led to more and more folks that live there.
Listen, keep hearing, what can we do? There's no question that the simplest thing is not speed bumps, but speed humps. So if you still have the bump there, you've got this long hump. You see them all over Asheville, and therefore it's not detrimental to the fire trucks or the garbage trucks or anything like that. So those could be done, those could be done quickly. And that right there would go ahead and reduce some of the danger. Number two, if we really wanted to address safety, we'd move the fence back. As you move the fence back, and then you go ahead.
I'll express to you again, there's not a scenario where I'm willing to do the fence to allow for parking. That's the reason that we had the rest of the first place, and a parallel park there, and they're done within the distance from the traffic.
Okay, then, don't we have police department?
Yes.
I would assume the police department would go ahead and enforce it. You'd go ahead and enforce it. No parking. There are several places in town we have no parking. What happens if someone parks there? They get towed off. People would understand.
That is the conversation that I have with the police department. As it relates to enforcement requirements and what is expected of us as a planning department, I'm not going to pick and choose which parts of our constitution.
Oh, you're going to argue. We want to find excuses not to do it. You're giving a lot of excuses not to do it.
I'm giving absolutely no excuses.
If we go ahead and do those two things, just a second please. Just a second please. If we do those two things, then we've got time to revisit about the parking from the railroad. And it wouldn't take much for us to go ahead, cost-wise, and put in a traffic bond from the right there, the period beginning of that apartment house on the left side to Center Street. It's only 200 feet. I just walked it off. It's 200 feet. How much money is that going to be? Now you've got a place for people to walk safely. But it's up to the board to decide what they want to do.
So again, I would strongly encourage that we that we continue the discussion of safety on Ridgeway and exploring options for pedestrian and cyclists and car safety, motor vehicle safety. However, I would move that we decline resolutions to turn some of the way avenues.
Any, any more discussion?
Before, hey, before we go, is there, I don't know. Do you want to discuss speed humps?
We have no policy for speed bumps, speed humps, any of that at all. And I will tell you, I have no issue with doing that, but we should get ready, because everyone is thankful. Those they ask for, we hear usually.
We've discussed security policy, have that.
Just so you know that, we want to not forget that. If y'all want to go speed bumps or speed humps on our, vote and we might get out.
Would that be part of motion? Would you prefer that to be part of motion?
Okay, so if there's two, if there's speed bumps, people still don't have a place to walk.
There's a lot of people, cyclists issue. It's less of slow traffic. It has nothing to do with pedestrian safety. Which is the primary, to your point, Mr. Mater, what I've been bringing up the most tonight.
I mean, I already did, so in full traffic, well, it does impact pedestrian safety, right?
No, there's no rear that is a designated place for someone to walk in the road. And you're talking about a road that has a 90-degree turn and also has visibility issues on hill. So there's some significant kind of land issues.
Yeah, no, I'm with you there, for sure.
The 90-degree turn of the lot is traffic on me. That slows people down. That right there does. You put a couple of traffic humps up at the top from there to US 70, you've reduced the speed on that road tremendously. What's your answer here?
I mean, I guess it's simply to to decline resolutions to turn some of the avenues, if you want, right? But again, I do not want to just push this down the road and say we'll do something in four years. And that's what will happen if we don't act tonight. So I don't know how we want to go forward with carrying some sort of traffic calming measures at the temporary days and for discussing working with the railroad on or in the easement and also I guess I'm looking for, yeah, it's for some of the people.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean, I certainly, I mean, the way, I mean, I didn't get addressed just the motion I just presented tonight. And we struck Josh and Seth coming back, you know, with another day as to the any information to get from the railroad along with, you know, a proposed metric for the installation of these speed humps is over for current events. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I know how busy you are, but it's possible to have some block total.
Do my best.
Well, I know you're at the middle of the railroad period, but yeah.
I don't know where we might. I don't think that, I don't really think they're going to have too much issue with that.
My, I just want to express a concern because I think that's what I heard you say. Is that we were saying that the speed humps would be a band-aid and so would the one-way traffic until you had time for sidewalks. But if you had no plan to reverse the decision to make it back into a two-way road, is that what I heard you say?
That's right. The recommendation was for it to become, based on the traffic study that was completed a year or so ago, the recommendation from that traffic study was that it become a one-way.
I see, that's what is the statement for me. Because if you're putting in, you're calling it a band-aid, that tells me that once you get the sidewalk, you're going to make it a two-way street.
No, absolutely not. The recommendation from the traffic study was that it become a one-way street. The answer would be that it become a one-way street and also have a barrier between car and bike pedestrians. and bike pedestrians, which typically is a sidewalk. Sorry, I didn't.
Just all, how much are the sidewalks?
Shell pains on one side, both sides. One side.
One side.
One side.
We started off.
Well, the distance that you had built up is 400 feet.
Just that, let me ask you a question. Just from State Street down to Bush.
I'll do that, 20 or anything?
20.
No, I'm guessing that all we do.
Then.
From State Street down to, from Richardson to Bush.
No, no.
For Logan to Bush.
Oh, that's probably a lot of that.
Yeah, probably.
And the other problem that I.
It's like the night it runs. We started trying to run some numbers this morning. I was just trying to pull it up. Somewhere between 8 and 15 dollars per foot.
Okay, now, is that for concrete or?
That's concrete, which is your cheapest option for a sidewalk. If you change, change it or go up in there.
Changing, putting in asphalt, I mean, concrete is cheaper than asphalt.
For a sidewalk, yeah. If you're talking about a race sidewalk, you're talking about 28 and.
Well, there are people that we can talk about a race sidewalk.
Well, they're just going to add, there's a great example. Again, all we got to do is move the fence back and catch yourself.
The fence is not the issue. The fence is part of the different problem.
We're talking about pretty quick. I mean, I would love for us to continue to say, if we're talking about 8,000 dollars, I was expecting to be not that.
Oh, that's true.
Although I have somewhere.
And what was it?
There are considerations over there that have to do with solar water and floodplains. So, when you start taking those things into consideration, that can make that installation cost go up. But the basic kind of after-the-door range is about 8, 15 dollars per foot.
Well, we're talking about feasibility, we're talking about through that section. We're talking about adding it next to the existing roadway or that's.
Yeah, all of this.
Or that's only a way, a one-way in the middle of a sidewalk on the existing roadway.
No, either way, it would be, for the sidewalk, it would be next to the existing roadway.
So, my next question is, how much, how much would someone have to remove?
We have 20, 20 feet on the side. And I think there are a couple of spots where there's some, there's some holes and things like that.
Perfect, perfect.
There, we're trying to look into which of those are part of our floodplain. Do we have some of those under utilities to address that way? Or would it be situated in a hole and have to do that? So, the answer on sidewalk front is we need to make determinations to get quoted.
So, on the tolls, we could do that, but we'd have on concrete road. That's good.
Yeah, so any of those are options.
I would propose that before the October meeting, we have, we, I think, we start to have to look into the feasibility of a sidewalk and the costs of that. Continue discussions with the railroad. And then, I guess, I don't need to see if we were to put in speed bumps on the trucks that go to the places where you didn't go before.
There's a standard.
Yeah. But I would like to see the costs of sidewalks.
Yeah.
And continue discussion for the cost.
I would agree.
It's okay, I'll call until after we're, they're coming back in the night.
We'll go ahead and deny them all of that.
So, your motion is that we're going to want to vote on it or just take it again?
No.
Okay. So, you have the motion to not close Rick. Okay, one way.
To delete it.
Delete it, delete it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
No.
Michelle, is that?
Is it 4-1 or 3-2?
2-4-1?
4-1.
Thank you for, for, for working with us there.
All right, we're at 8:46. Let's go ahead and take a quick, a minute break.
This is the short. We have one municipal block of the Fire Department Board that currently have two vacancies and is working in council with that person. She has been attending the meetings and is interested and recognized to a particular authority. This is for the maintenance. This is for public health and disability and property. So, that's what this board is. And in your habits, you go to corporate, the charter they established and some of the things.
I feel like people aren't on it anymore, right?
That was the ones that started.
That was going to trigger. That was quickly, we do this by ballot, and I want to get, we just kind of free us. Free fly.
Unless you want to see her out.
I am fine with that. I'll go and make a motion if there's anything else to say. I'm going to go and leave the office to the Blackwater Highway made this board and for all that she was interested in serving.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
9D Engineering Selection for Female Public Assistance Projects. These will be for the Public Services Building, the Public Safety Building, Lakeview Center, Lake Tomahawk Dam and Water Shed Dam, shooting range, veteran's park, bridge buildings, connection to operate, and all four trains building. So, for Public Services Building would be GMC is the public firm. Public Safety Building would be the Gilmore Associates. Lakeview Center, excuse me, Lakeview Center, engineers.
Who was that?
A R E T E. Lake Tomahawk Dam, Water Shed Dam, S and N A, shooting range and Gilmore Associates, veterans' park, bridge buildings, and connection to operate, and all four trains building. Gilmore Associates. All of these are for our architectural engineering services that, as you've told a lot of times, but FEMA is paying for these architectural engineering services for us. So, these are for our, more, did this last month for some of the other simpler stuff, if you will. This is a little more complicated buildings, so you might go longer to do this.
Has work begun on the, one group of group last, on the engineering?
Has work begun?
Yeah.
We saw it, yes.
I would just approve the engineering firm selections from the listed projects as of now.
All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, 9C will be consideration of amendments to the town's personal policy, Article 4, Section 9, to add a new subsection entitled Emergency Upper Time Compensation Policy. This will only be applicable, you know, if we have an emergency or we're looking for female reimbursement, we will be able to get reimbursement for post our salary. Currently, that is not in our policy, so anybody that worked more than a rate salary position, there is no reimbursement for. So, we think, well, we hope that this doesn't happen here. But we think if it does, this would be helpful for us to get some extra bucks back in the name of what we worked in the past, past.
I think this is really important. I'm glad to be seeing this. I did have a couple of questions to read through. And I will try to keep this brief in an hour, but I definitely get very, would this also allow that subject for PTO? Does hours decide if I would overtime? And is that part of the proposition?
This will be, this will be upper time.
And then, I just wonder about having a little more oversight of when emergencies are designated. And I certainly don't mean to imply any offense that anyone in this room would declare an emergency when it does not attack an emergency. However, our president is already declared 12 emergencies this year. And I wondered if it would be prudent to include a specification that the town council also vote to dedicate the emergency and the conclusion of the emergency as an additional step. So, president, governor, mayor, or manager, and then also approve by the council.
Very charming, very certain way that emergency statute, so for example, the mayor is the one that signs this, you know.
And he was.
I think you're right.
And I don't think that's probably a station.
Nine months since I looked at that, but that sounds about right. I don't think you want to have, if the governor declares an emergency, then you need to get in to it really quick, especially if you need to issue that first.
There were times, I mean, in early days of my tenure on the council, remember in COVID where the council voted to direct to the mayor to declare an emergency.
I don't have experience.
But that only got required. I think you could have done it, I don't know. But we did vote to do that.
I was typically, it works, you know, the governor does this thing, and usually the county calls me. And I call the mayor. Typically, the county manager will call me and say, hey, we're going to declare a diversity of the county, you will be included in this. And typically, I'll talk to the mayor and we get included.
My understanding is the intention here is for this to classify emergencies slightly compared to FEMA's or the state's, so.
We're not trying to give extra money to our people.
I see. And I always want to have good policies that in the future represent the intentions of the council today.
Some move to approve the revision in the town personal policy, as we said in the recommended. In discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Then we have 9D, which is creation of town attorney review process on the, that's one very.
We talked about this for a while, and prior, I do want to acknowledge that this is not about you or your group, but in fact, about, again, having good policies that will age well for our.
This law. You issued this law.
Yes, okay. Well, and maybe more questioning, and this is intended to be. Yes, well, and maybe more coaching and this is intended to be a fair, clear process of transparency so that the council, the mayor, the town manager can provide feedback and have dialogue about how things are going with the town attorney. Because in these meetings, we have to have those clauses for, for a greater conversation. So the idea would be overall an annual review process. Distincts, but not totally dissimilar from what we do with the town manager. I've outlined that in the, I didn't know they came here, but I realize we don't, we may have a present in front of us. But I'm happy to stop on that. If folks had questions, comments, please.
Any other piece I was thinking about was plan to do it. I would think we would want to do it maybe beginning with every, every even year. Because then you've got council members that have been around for a while. You wouldn't want random council members to do it. You know what I'm saying?
So you're saying every other year?
No.
Oh.
I'm saying like January, February, twenty twenty-sixth, every even year. Because the next election would be in the summer. So there would be some time. We would ask people that actually knew if they were doing it. There's not a time to do it.
We're always. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. So every, every other year, so every even year? And then?
We're not.
That's a precaution.
It takes a lot of time to offer that in the year.
Yeah.
Because if you're going around first in the year and out of here, then you're going to run into a situation and hang shot for the whole.
I think that's really thoughtful and really, I'm only, only, I'm only about to season. Certainly it would be my preference. It obviously wouldn't work this year, but August, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, it's going to throw months out there, but open to all sponsors. Any feedback on the, on the steps of the process they have?
You don't want to bring your question cycle. And if I'm still failing, you want to go and turn to attorney, attorney in the law. And you would want to give any attorney time to hear and face themselves in a couple of months. So you want to build some buffer, so you're not going to fight on the law. So I'm just, I'm just saying, January is already about a month. You don't want to do it in, if it's August, then you get out of budget whack if, if things don't work out. You already set your budgets. If you want to do it in June.
And who would be, whatever you're going to have, maybe.
That's going to be a lot of fun.
That's fun.
I'm excited, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm less concerned about how to find what month of the year and how we're having the process by, by the January screen. I think for the issue of new council members, it'll be a first impression type thing. I, I, yeah. I don't know. I think that can be taken with a grain of salt. I think the recommendation would be, my, my thought was to have a discussion here and then move forward with asking staff to put more lines together. What, what steps do you imagine? Do you need, do you need?
I think we can put, put the, we got two of those examples.
Yes.
We just put those together with our information here and bring them together. Do that next month.
Yes.
I was kind of on here to look through the feedback from y'all on those remarks and take that off of y'all's plate if you want. But have y'all been, already known with those two examples and?
For me, I will say upcoming events, we've got some things coming up, Blue Festival, nine twenty-six to nine twenty-eight. Please park golf tournaments on nine twenty-six. Our Urbanly Anniversary Event will be here on nine twenty-seven. And then National Night Out, please park by the October seventh.
I don't have anything. Anybody got anything? No. Ted, I hear motion go in closed session.
Turn around.